in said county qualified by law to vote in town affairs. To meet at the Lloyd Central School at 137 Nacloset Road in Sedtown on the 24th day of April, 8/20/2024. At 6:00 in the evening, then and there, to act on Articles 1 through 47, all said articles being sent out to it. Article 1, to elect a moderator to preside in said meeting and to vote by written back.
I nominate Mike Field.
I second the motion.
I nominate him see.
I second that nomination. I mean, that vote.
All right, now we're gonna vote. They voted for Mike Field. All right, Mike, Frank Iranian. I.
Aye. I agree.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall.
So long as I shall.
A continue as citizen thereof.
A continue citizen thereof.
I do swear.
I do swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my ability.
The duties incumbent.
Duties incumbent.
Onto me.
Onto me.
As moderator.
As moderator.
Of the Town of Woolwich.
The Town of Woolwich.
According to the state and the, uh, according to the state and the laws so highly governed.
According to the state and the laws so highly governed.
All right, good evening. I ask all those who are able to please stand for the pledge allegiance. By pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
All right, thank you. So a few announcements before we get started. First, I'd like to introduce Ms. Debbie Locke. She's gonna talk about the food bank and some other things.
Actually, things that you're all pretty familiar with, but just to say the Rural Carrier Stampout Hunger Food Drive will be held on Saturday, May 11. Non-perishable foods, and just make sure they're not outdated. And they all go to the, go to Bath Food Bank, and they'll be available for you and then you know who needs it. And the annual Town Memorial Day service will be Monday, May 27 at 7:00 p.m. at the First Baptist Church on the Middle Road. A museum, if you haven't been there, you really should, we hope, come sometime, will be open Sunday afternoons, June, July, and August from 12 to 4. And there will be a special guest on the first Sunday in June, the 2nd. Kevin Barney will have a really special machine that splits wood two pieces at a time. It's really, it's really cool. We recommend that you come over sometime between 12:30 and 2:00. Thanks.
Thank you, Debbie. The next present, uh, presentation is the Spirit of America Award. Select Vice Chair Jason Shaw and Select Personnel Allison Hepler.
So one of the great things we get to do is to recognize volunteers, because volunteers in a town this size are really what keep the town going. And this year, we've been honoring people and groups for a number of years, and this year, we are honoring the Montswiggers. So we have a little proclamation for you. Whereas Woolwich is blessed with talented local musicians and.
Whereas the Montswiggers have been creating music for our community since 2012, when they first performed at the South Woolwich Volunteer Fight Department Schoolhouse, and.
Whereas they have graciously and joyfully entertained us in many local events, such as the annual tree lighting Veterans Day, Woolwich Day, and also share their music throughout the area, such as at Sunnybrook Bath Kindness Day, the West Point Wharf, and at least one concert dance in Pittston, and.
Whereas no one is really taking credit for the name. Although the group was initially comprised of residents around Montswig Bay, Montswig Road, and now includes musicians from as far away as Falmouth and Boothby Harbor, and.
Whereas they have diligently kept to a regular practice schedule even during COVID, when they practiced in Scottchampa's front yard, to the delight of local residents such as myself. Therefore.
Be it resolved that the Town of Woolwich confers the 2024 Spirit of America Award on the Montswiggers on this day, the 24th of April, 2024.
Thank you. Thank you. So.
Next present, uh, presentation will be the legislative sentiment by State Representative Allison Hepler.
So Mr. Shaw, would you come forward? One of the things that is one of my favorite things in the State House to do is to recognize people in our community who do remarkable things. And Jack Shaw is one of them.
Hi.
So this is from the State of Maine. Be it known to all that we, the members of the Senate and the House of Representatives, join in recognizing Jack A. Shaw and Sons, Inc., a Woolwich which is celebrating 75 years in business. We extend our congratulations and best wishes, and be it ordered that this official expression of sentiment be sent forthwith on behalf of the 131st Legislature and the people of the State of Maine. It's signed by Tori Jackson, President of the Senate, Derek Grant, Secretary of the Senate, Rachel Talbot-Ross, Speaker of the House, Robert Hunt, Clerk of the House, and happily sponsored by myself and Senator Vitelli.
I wouldn't have moved for 75 years, too.
So when this came up in the ca, in the calendar, let's say, calendar, I may have been inspired to stand up and brag on you guys a little bit. And what I said basically was Jack Shaw is a town treasure. No one advocates harder for this town than you do. No one knows more about this town and loves this town more than you do. I, as a legislator, have learned so much about sand, gravel, hot top, roads, bridges, and. Mud, mud. Unpaved road, paved road, tar, tar, yeah, all of those things. And as a, and I have to say, as a, as a legislator, I feel like I know a lot more about roads and bridges and et cetera than I, than many of my colleagues do, so thank you and congratulations.
And as road commissioner, as a con, as road commissioner and as a contractor, I know you do.
Thank you.
Now we have another recognition, and this will be our Vice Chair, Jason Shaw, and Select Personnel Allison Hepler.
Uh, we just wanted to take this moment to recognize, um, two of our staff members who are here today. Uh, our Town Administrator and our Town Clerk, and so we just have some favors for them. We are very appreciative, the Select Board's very appreciative for all the work they do for the town and putting up with the Select Board and our confusion and the busy world that we're in. So we just wanted to recognize them. Uh, we, we know we're a tax collector, uh, but I don't think Candace is here tonight, right? So anyway, don't forget her, too. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to now recognize RSU Board Representative, Ms. Jennifer Rich Smith.
You have to turn it on. Just slide it.
How does that work? Good. Um, so the, the board has asked me to come here and talk just a little bit about our school budget, which, um, for some of you, you may remember the time we would pass the school budget here in the gymnasium. And, um, because we are now a regional school unit, not just a Woolwich Central School, we are, um, doing this in a different way, and it's done, um, over endless hours as any budget is done, and with a lot of consideration, both to how to help our families, our children, students, and also out of respect for the cost of the property taxes that are borne by all the residents in Bath and Woolwich and Arousick and Pittsburgh now. So I just wanted to come and let you know that we are having one of the most challenging budget years in my 10 years on the school board. The costs have gone up for almost everything, as everybody knows, and, um, we are no longer having the benefit of the additional federal funding that we had during COVID to help with the cost of the budget. So, um, we are struggling with how to help our students the best, but also how to respect the responsibility of the taxpayer money. We started out the budget this year, um, at, just in the beginning, was a historic 4% increase for Woolwich before we started the concept of adding back in what our parents and our teachers and our students tell us that they desperately need more mental health services in our schools. So we are struggling with how to provide those services, which aren't historically what we did in our schools, and also to be a balance our other needs. So, uh, we are, unfortunately, the process is, is that even the school board will give a budget, and then we release it to the towns. And at that moment, the towns can tell, the school board can decide they want to add more money to it. And that's beyond the scope or the capability of what the school board can do. So we've, um, got some meetings coming up, and I would greatly encourage anyone to attend any of them. It's a complex concept, but as you can listen and learn and give us feedback, it's important. Our next budget meeting on the school board is April 29. Well, then we have another meeting after that, where the board kind of finalizes what we're going to do on April 6, uh, May 6. On May 28th, we give the budget over to the towns and say, here's what we have. Do you want us, that budget to go forward to our voting? Um, and, uh, and then we have the referendum June 11. So if you have questions about it, it's a big cost impact for our towns. I keep struggling with trying to find any way to keep that at a reasonable rate, but it's hard. I'm one voice on the board, um, school board, and, um, it is a struggle. I think David's gonna talk a little bit to be able to explain what it's gonna mean to us as taxpayers as this budget goes up, but I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions? Yes.
When are those meetings? Where are those meetings?
Uh, Morse.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. Mr. Chairman?
Okay, I just wanted to touch base with the folks here and, and let you know, first of all, if you notice over there, there's, there's a big piece of white paper that has a, a name and a address on it, and there's a pencil and some paper there. And I'd really like it if a bunch of you people would write to Bruce Smith and note and tell him what deplorable condition Route 127 is in. I think the more people we can get complain directly to the road commis, to the DOT Commissioner, the better chance we'll have of getting that road fixed. That road, that road is in terrible shape. Uh, they have it designated as a minor collector road. But it's a minor collector road that transports half the employees to the largest employer in the State of Maine, and it takes a beating. So if you all just write down that address and write a short little letter, we thought about doing form letters, but if we had form letters here and everybody signed them and sent them out, they'd just throw them in the trash. But if they could get individual comments from the, from the people that use the road, we might be able to get that road fixed.
Also, just on that note, the Select Board, we drafted a letter, we're working with the Town of Dresden on a joint letter. Just so you know, the, the Select Board, the road commissioner, we talked to DOT every two or three times a day. We, we, we express our concerns a lot. We want you to know that we hear all the complaints, we see all the complaints, but there's only so much we can do. But we are working on this letter, and the Town of Dresden is voting. Last night or tonight, they were voting on it, and so we're doing everything we can. Yeah, and, and the letter outlines, you know, our request for both towns to have a meeting of, of the road situation and see what we can do going forward, but anyway.
I hope everybody understands that that is a state road, and we are not allowed to touch it. We can't do anything to that road other than plow. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about is the budget a little bit. As Jennifer said, we are looking at a fairly significant increase for the school, and for the first time ever, ever, our county tax is gonna exceed $1 million this year. So we've got that. Plus, uh, as you know, we're starting a rebell, and one of the reasons we're starting to rebel, and one of the reasons it's necessary, is this year, um, our state municipal, uh, ratio of what we sell houses for compared to what they're assessed for is at 59%, okay? That means that, well, for example, we've got a house on the market right now, we have it assessed for $300,000. It's on the market for $1.2 million, and it'll probably sell for that, okay? And that's where we're at. The houses in this town are selling way above what the assessed value is. My own house, we're going on almost 16 years since the last, last revaluation. So I'm paying taxes based on what my house was worth 16 years ago. A rebell will make, will even that out, so that we'll all be paying our fair share. This year, we can, we're at 59%, but the state allows us to declare up to 65%. But what that means is if you get open space, tree growth, uh, farm subsidy, or your homestead exemption, you're only gonna get 65% of it this year. That's, that's the, the carrot and the stick, you know? I mean, that's the, that's what the state does. They're gonna, they're gonna cut all our subsidies down to 65% what we would normally get. So the rebell people are gonna be starting here in Woolwich in the next couple of weeks. They're gonna start on the north end of the town and work their way south, and they'll have it done in time for our next year, uh, assessments and everything. But I just wanted to touch base and let everybody know is that we won't get 10,000 phone calls at the Town Hall asking why your homestead exemption was only 65% of what you expected to get. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, before we get into the articles, I just wanna go through a few guidelines for the meeting. If you wish to speak, wait until I open the floor to comment. When I recognize you, please stand and state your name, and then the nature of your comments. Please refrain from discussion on the article if you have a conflict of interest in the article. That I will not entertain any public comment about specific individuals. I have the right to set a time limit for comments. Prepare, be prepared to state your business in a brief and concise manner. During a, a meeting like this, you can, the subject matter is the only thing that can be discussed. Comments should always be courteous. Personal accusatory comments are out of order. Profanity, disorderly language, or gestures at meetings are prohibited. At no time will it be publicly allowed to argue, debate, or introduce a topic that is not on the agenda. During the discussion, the audience shall not disturb the proceedings by loud talking, whispering, or other distractions. And I will be allowing town staff to talk without objection, uh, for any of the articles, uh, towards the end of the, uh, meeting. And I met two friends this evening, Willoughby and Bellicaro, over here to my right. These two folks have volunteered to be our runners this evening, so you all have to come to the center. They will come to you with their microphone if you like to, uh, make a comment. All right, let's jump into business. I'm gonna take two, uh, Articles 2 through 4 together. Do know when I do bundle articles, if you wish to pull one of those out of there, of course, we can do that. Article 2, to see if the town will set the dates of October 30th, 2024, and April 30th, 2025, when taxes are due and payable, and to see if the town will fix the interest rate on unpaid taxes at 8% per annum, 36 MRSA 505.4, and to set the dates that our interest starts on unpaid taxes 30 days after each due date. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to set an interest rate to be paid by the town on taxes that have been paid but are either abated or overpaid and refunded at 4% for the 2024-25 tax year, per 36 MRSA subsection 506A. And Article 4, to see if the town will vote to transfer all unexpended balances and overdrafts to the undesignated fund balance, except those that may be carried forward at the Select Board's discretion. The Select Board is authorized to expend funds out of these carried-forward accounts for the purpose for which they establish or allow, uh, excuse me, to allow them to lapse.
I move that Articles 2, 3, and 4 are accepted as read. I second the motion.
Articles 2, 3, 4, oop, as a motion's been made, uh, for Articles as read, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Articles 2, 3, and 4 pass. Article 5A, to see what sum the town will vote to appropriate from the undesignated fund balance account to reduce the tax commitment. Note, the Board of Selectmen recommends up to $1,700,000. 2023 was $1,500,000.
Move the Articles be accepted as read.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept the article as read, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Article 5 passes. I'm gonna, uh, bundle Article 5B, C, and D. Article 5B, to see if the town will vote to authorize a tax collector or treasurer to accept prepayments of taxes not yet committed pursuant to 36 MRSA subsection 506. C, to see if the town will vote to appropriate up to $20,000 from the undesignated fund balance account to pay for abatements and applicable interest granted during the fiscal year. 2023 appropriation was up to 20,000. And D, to grant the Select Board the permission to remove up to $50,000 from the undes, undesignated fund balance in the event of a state or federal declared emergency and/or disaster.
I move that B, C, and D are accepted as read. I second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept B, C, 5, B, C, D as read, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Articles B, C, and D signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. 5, B, C, D pass. Articles 6 and 7 I'm gonna take together. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for available grants to receive said grants, and to expend the grant funds for the purposes stated in the grant, and to see if the town will vote to appropriate up to $40,000 from the undesignated fund balance account as the town's share of any approved grants. Article 7A, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Selectmen to sell or dispose of various items that serve little or no purpose in the operation of the town. Article 7B, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Selectmen to accept donations, fines, fees established by ordinance, and revenues generated by town-provided services, and to use them as directed by the, by the donation, ordinance, or contract, or otherwise at the Selectmen's discretion.
Move the Articles be accepted as read. Second the motion.
Been moved the seconded to, uh, accept 6 and 7 as read, any discussion? Seeing none, Articles, uh, all those in favor of Articles 6 and 7, A, B, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. 6 and 7, A, B, pass. Article 8, to select a Fish Commissioner for a five-year term.
I nominate Robert Stevens. I second that motion.
Robert Stevens has been nominated, and, uh, a motion's been made, uh, for Robert Stevens, seconded for Robert Stevens nomination. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of Mr. Stevens for the 2024, 20, through 2029 Fish Commissioner term, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Robert Stevens is our Fish Commissioner. Congratulations. Article 9A, to see what action the town will take in regard to the L-Life Privileges at Nacloset and Back River Creek for the coming year.
I move that we leave that up to the Fish Commissioners. I second that motion.
So it's been a move, uh, for Article 9A to leave that up to the Fish Commissioners as read. Any discussion? All those in favor of Article 9As signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. 9A passes. 9B, to see if the town will authorize the Fish Commissioners on behalf of the town to use funds from the yearly sale of L-Life Privileges collected in the Fishway Account for maintenance purposes of the Fishway Buildings and property. The Fish Commissioners are responsible for maintenance decisions. As the Fishway Property is shared with the Bath Water District, the Fish Commissioners were coordinating with them on matters related to the L-Life Privileges. When expenditures are expected to be greater than $1,000, the planned Fishway Maintenance Project will be presented to the Select Board for their agreement. Use of Fishway Funds for the purposes other than Fishway purposes shall be subject to a vote of the town.
Move the Articles be accepted as read. Second the motion.
Article 9B, moved and seconded and as read, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. 9B passes. Article 10, to see if the town will, will vote to authorize the Selectmen on behalf of the town to provide to the former owner or owners of tax-acquired property, or if deceased, his, her, their heirs, devices, personal representative, 30 days to repurchase the property for a price equal to all outstanding taxes, interest, fees, and costs. If the former owner does not repurchase the property, the municipal officers may sell the property through the sale process in accordance with 36 MRSA subsection 943C. Provided that if the former owner does not timely request that process, or the Board is unable to list or sell the property as required by subsection 943C 3, the Board may sell the property through a competitive sealed bid process in which a notice advertising sale of the property shall be published at least twice in a newspaper of general circulation in the county for, for sales to someone other than the former owner or owners. Excess sale proceeds, as defined in 36 MRSA subsection 943C, shall be returned to the former owner.
We move the Articles be accepted as read. Second the motion.
Article 10 has been moved and seconded and as read, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 10 passes. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to increase property tax levy limit of $865,667.73, established for the Town of Woolwich by state law in the event that the municipal budget approved under the following articles will result in a tax commitment that is greater than the property tax levy limit. Note, this article is needed because L, because the LD1 tax reform legislation does not take into account the town's use of surplus to reduce taxes when processing the commitment of taxes and appropriations approved during this town meeting. and appropriations approved during this town meeting will exceed the tax levy cap.
Move the article to be accepted and read. Second the motion?
Article Eleven has been moved and seconded as read.
I'd like to say thanks to Allison. This is the last year we're gonna vote on this. Because we have to, we have, in the past, we always had to roll, use written ballot to vote on this. This year, we can do it by voice. And the thing of it is, is we have to report the outcome of that vote to the State Planning Commission, which no longer exists. It has not existed for at least five or six years. So we've been doing this every year because the law required us to do it, and then doing nothing with the results.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Eleven signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article Eleven passes. Personnel and Town Officers. Article Twelve, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $48,500 for the compensation of the town clerk, deputy treasurer, deputy tax collector, and to authorize the Selectmen to spend any amount up to $48,500. 2023 appropriation, $45,156.
Move the article to be accepted and read. Second the motion?
Article has been moved and seconded as read. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Article Thirteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $76,000 for the compensation of the town administrator, town treasurer, and to authorize the Selectmen to spend any amount up to $76,000. 2023 appropriation, $70,308.
Move the article to be accepted and read. Second the motion?
Article Thirteen has been moved and seconded as read. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify, whoop, I'm sorry.
Jeff, so is this up to $76,000? So is that negotiable? That it'll be $73,500, or is she gonna just get $76,000?
What we're trying to do here is we're trying to, when Lloyd Coons was our town administrator for 12 years, Lloyd didn't wanna make any more money. So we didn't give him a raise for almost that whole 12 years, which was great. We saved a lot of money. But what it did was it put us 12 years behind. And if you look around, we, every year, we check other towns approximately the same size as Woolwich. And even at $76,000, we're way below what most towns are paying. We actually had the Town of Piston call during business hours this year and offer our tax collector, on our phone, they called our office, and they offered our tax collector 20 grand a year more to leave us and go to Piston. I thought that was a real cheesy thing to do. That's it. I read an article the other day where this, I think that, don't quote me on this, but I think the number was 2,600. There are 2,600 unfilled municipal jobs in the state of Maine right now. And towns everywhere are trying to poach employees from other towns. I think we'd be cutting our noses to spite our face to not, not give this raise. And we don't intend to do this every year, but we're trying to catch up. And, and trust me, for the many hats that Kim wears on a given day, Chief Worf would resent this.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, whoop, sorry.
It's really okay, so are we giving them the full $6,000?
So Jeff, these, these amounts are merit-based, cost-of-living, all tied together. The Board does evaluations. The reason the article says "up to" many times is because if we lose a staff member throughout the year and somebody came on board, it doesn't necessarily mean that they would get paid the, that amount. You know what I mean? So that's the reason the article sort of does that. But obviously, the Board towards the end of this fiscal year does evaluations and very likely we would spend an amount of money, yes.
Thank you. That was a good explanation.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of Article Thirteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article Thirteen passes. Article Fourteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $48,500 for the compensation of the tax collector, deputy town clerk, and to authorize the Selectmen to spend any amount up to $48,500. 2023, $45,156.
Move the article to be accepted and read. Second the motion?
Article Fourteen has been moved and seconded as read. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Fourteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article Fourteen passes. Article Fifteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $33,000 for the Employee Health Insurance Account. 2023 appropriation, $26,000.
Move the article to be accepted and read. Second the motion?
Article Fifteen has been moved and seconded as read. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article Fifteen passes. Article Sixteen, A, to see what sum of money the town will vote to pay, to pay the town officers for the ensuing year.
Mr. Monitor?
Yes, Mr. Monitor.
I'd like to make a motion that we dispense with the balance of the reading of each of those line items.
It's under the second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to waive the reading of Sixteen, A. All those, any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Jeff, again, just wondering why the Selectmen, right, $5,000 again this year, we just don't give these guys a raise. God bless you for doing the job, but I can't see where the last time you guys got a raise.
Actually, Jeff, it was a few years ago, and it did get moved, and, and, you know, I think the Select, well, this is a stipend for the Select Board. It's not the intention to have raises every year for those, for these positions. If that makes any sense or not. We're all doing okay. We're, we're gonna do what we can.
Thank you.
Yes.
Could you at least explain the three or four, beginning with unemployment compensation, that led up to this year?
Sure, may I get your name, please?
Cynthia Brock.
Cynthia Brock, thank you, Cynthia.
Brock. Brock.
Brock, I'm sorry, Brock.
That's based on payroll, and if you've gotten any, any of your insurance bills recently, you're gonna see that any kind of, any form of insurance at all is going to be through the roof.
Yes, sir.
Matt, I'm, I'm Matt Phillips. I'd like to hear a little more about the workers' compensation interest, because that is one, one coverage that's not generally covered in this group. So is that really interest by payroll? It's like a 60% increase.
Yes, workers' compensation is done by payroll. And we, what we have to do is, we have to put in a number that will cover, we, we don't know what we can pay yet. We don't find that out until June or July. So we have to have a number in the year that, based on, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Kim, but I think they said, what, 12, 14% at least increase this year?
Yes, we got nabbed on workers' compensation this year because they, if you are an EMS worker and a fire, work, a firefighter, if you are cross-trained, all EMS personnel are in that fire payroll. Sorry, can you hear me? Sorry. So EMS, if you're cross-trained as a firefighter, you are, you are in that firefighter payroll or that workman's comp payroll line, and you are at the highest percentage. And unfortunately, we had a couple of workman's comp claim that just put us at the highest percentage that we could be. And even though most of our EMS payroll is standby, I have to include that in the firefighter payroll. So it went up significantly.
I'd like to say, I'd like to address that on compensation. We pay workers' comp even when they're not working, because they're on, they're on standby. But we have to pay workers' comp on them while they're at home on standby.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Articles Six, whoop, we have to move the, we did, right? We moved the article?
Move the Articles Sixteen, A is accepted and read. Second the motion?
Article Sixteen has been moved and accepted as read. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Sixteen, A signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Sixteen, A passes. Article Sixteen, B, to see what sum, if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the town officer's account for the ensuing year. We recommend $73,806. 2023 appropriation, $66,637.
Move the article to be accepted and read. Second the motion?
Sixteen, B has been moved and seconded as read. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Sixteen, B signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Sixteen, B passes. Sixteen, C, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $8,752 for the salary, including mileage, to the animal control officer, and to authorize the Selectmen to spend any amount up to $8,752. 2023 appropriation, $8,480.
Move the article to be accepted and read. Second the motion?
Article Sixteen, C has been moved and seconded as read. Any discussion? Yes.
Rue Brown, I'm just wondering, why does she get so little?
It's a part-time job.
Oh, I know it's a part-time job.
It's a part-time job, and this is, this is a salary that we negotiated with the, with the person that does it, and she's happy with that.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Article Sixteen, C, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Sixteen, C passes. Sixteen, D, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $35,000 for the salary of the codes enforcement officer, building inspector, and licensed plumbing inspector, and to authorize the Selectmen to spend any amount up to $35,000. 2023 appropriation, $31,843.
Move the article to be accepted and read. Second the motion?
Sixteen, D is moved and seconded as read. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Sixteen, D signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Sixteen, D passes. Sixteen, E, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 for temporary help and training replacement personnel, and to authorize the Select people to spend any amount up to $5,000. 23, 2023 appropriation, $3,000.
Move the article to be accepted and read. Second the motion?
Article Sixteen, E has been moved and seconded as read. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Sixteen, E signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article Sixteen, E passes. General Government. Article Seventeen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate such sums of money as be necessary for the following town accounts.
Mr. Monitor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that dispense with the balance of the reading of those individual line items.
It's under the second.
Second.
This motion has been made and seconded to suspend the reading of Article Seventeen. Any discussion? Yes.
What's, uh, my name's Carleton, Alan. What's, uh, the contingency fund? What do we use that for? I just don't know.
Okay. All right. Okay. One second, just a point of order that I've, I've made a mistake. We'll vote on suspending the reading, and then we'll move the article, and then we'll have discussion while I answer your question. Thank you. All right, thanks. My first time. Hard to feel, I won't feel Mr. Chapman shoes, but it's hard to be, um, okay. So, motion made and seconded to suspend the reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion passes. Article Seventeen.
Move the article to be accepted and read. I second the motion?
Article Seventeen has been moved and seconded as presented. Now we have the question from the gentleman over here.
Which contingency, which question?
The one that has $10,000 and $15,000? Yes. Down.
That's the Selectmen's contingency. What we use that for is any, any budget, uh, any budget in the town that gets exceeded, we use that to cover it. It's, it's like having the cookie jar on top of your refrigerator that you put a little buck, a few bucks in, so when the refrigerator or the toaster dies, you've got the money to buy it without having to borrow it. Uh, one year, when I first got on the Board, we needed to raise $400 or $500 or something, and it cost us $300 to have a special town meeting to raise $400. And that didn't make a lot of sense to me, so we, we never had a contingency until then. What we do, we very seldom ever increase this, and what we do at the end of the year, if there's any money left in it, we lapse it. It goes in, and then surplus goes back, because we ask for the same amount every year. And then most, most years, we give a considerable amount of it back. Once in a while, we get caught, and we use a lot of it.
Yes.
I'm Claudia Hatch. Our question about the general assistance, um, is, it says zero, and I'm just wondering, is that covered in some other, other category? Or are we not doing general assistance?
We have, we have enough money in that account this year that we don't need to raise any.
Charlie?
Yeah, and I assume that the same goes for the townhouse account? Is this your, uh?
Uh, yes, the old townhouse, if you've noticed, uh, I, I'm kinda, there's only, uh, we used to have five people on, on the old townhouse committee, and four of them have passed away. I'm the only one left. So the meeting's a real shot, and I always get my own wife. If you've noticed, we, we, we did two sides of it last year. We're doing the other two sides this year. And Dale Reno, again this year, is donating all the labor to do that. Uh, we are just paying, we are just paying for the materials. And I have enough money in the account to pay for that this year. That building, if you've never been in it, you should come up. We, we meet there, the second meeting, June, every year. And you really should come in and look at that building. It's a neat old building. It's an amphitheater. Each row of seats is higher than the row in front of it. And that, that building is, uh, that's our history, so we, we need to keep it up. But this year, I've got enough money to do it.
Any other discussion? Yes.
Tom Stoner, um, question on the planning board of Zero Amount. There's a Zero Amount there. Is there a reason for that in view of the legislation and ordinances and other things that need to be done this year?
Years ago, when I was on the chairman of the planning board, uh, we, we used to charge like 10 bucks for, for, if you came in front of the planning board, and we paid $50 back then for the newspaper to advertise that. So I came to the meeting here one year, and I asked to increase all the fees so the planning board could become self-sufficient. And they are still, and I think Greg will, will stand by, behind me on this. They're still, they've taken enough money every year to be self-sufficient. And we carry forward some money for them each year so to make sure that they, they, they have a little bit, so that they can buy the advertising that's necessary for all the meetings and everything. So they, uh, in discussions with Greg, he just felt that we didn't need any money for them this year.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, for Article Seventeen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article Seventeen passes. Article Eighteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $66,392 to support the operating costs of the patent-free library. the operating costs of the patent-free library and to authorize the selectmen to spend any amount up to $66,392. 2023 appropriation, $63,231.
Move the article to be accepted and read. Second motion.
Article 18 has been moved and seconded and as read. Any discussion? Heidi.
I don't need to make a comment. Heidi Kirkpatrick, I've been watching for several years as the money for the patent libraries, the patent-free library has gone up and up, and I want to say first of all that it's not that I'm against the patent-free library. I agree with its mission. I agree that everybody should have access to it, but I also agree that I'm listening to a lot of other bills that are going up and up and up every year. Why aren't we looking at this number and reducing it to an amount that will pay for the people that want to go to the library, pay for the library cards, maybe even come up with a much smaller amount to give to the library? I'm listening to what the workers' comp and the concerns about raises for our community. Those, to me, are necessary things. The library, as good as it is, is not used as much as it was years past. I'm a coach at the high school, and I know that I'm around kids all the time, every day for about six months of the year. I don't know any of my kids that use the library. If somebody wants to use it, great. Have the town pay for the card. Have the town come up with some money to give to the library, it a little bit extra. But I think that over $60,000 is a little bit obscene.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Tom.
Yes, Tom Stoner. I'm sure we can all agree that the library provides a very good service. There's no doubt about that. However, to my knowledge, there's no control with the town of Woolwich has in regards to the operating budget of the library. And so, looking at thousands according to the numbers that the library provides. Oh, thank you. This should work a little better. Yeah, according to the library's numbers, 1,002 are the number of cardholders in Woolwich. However, that may not account for the inactive cardholders. Like myself, I don't think I've been there in the last several years. So, it doesn't count that, but according to their budget, that would be $71,400 without the member town status. The question should also be asked as to how many cardholders could afford the $70, rather than depending on the collective contribution by taxpayers. Since the proposed contribution provides an apparent discount, which would come in at $66,392, according to their numbers at the library, there should be enough leverage to also request some control of the operating budget. Or, as an alternate, the modification should be to place this under Article 41 as a donation, not part of the tax structure. Since no amendments are possible at the town meeting, a request to have conservative accounting representation from Woolwich on the library board should be required, and that requires a no vote on this article. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
It's my understanding from a couple of years...
Grab the mic, please.
Wait a second. Mic will be right out.
As I recall, there was a lady here a couple of years ago at the town meeting who was a representative on the board of the library. Is she no longer in that position? What's the story?
Hi, I'm Mary Ellen Casimer, and I live on Emmerittown Drive. I am not on the board anymore. I got termed out after nine years. However, one of our select board members is not only on the board, there are several other residents of the town on the board, and I hope it's okay for me to say that Tommy Davis, right here, one of our select board members, is the chair of the finance committee. And that is where, and I was the chair of the finance committee when I was on the board. So, Woolwich is very well represented when it comes to developing the budget. It is as similar to what Jenny was saying earlier. It's a tough thing to do. It is very difficult, especially in these times, to put together a budget to serve all of our five communities. There are so few ways that anybody can think of to come up with a system that feels fair to everyone. The system we have and that's been in place since the 1960s is the per capita system, where the total budget is arrived at, and then the towns that have voted to participate in the library, the money is allocated on a per capita or per taxpayer basis. So, in all those years, there have been many, many, many discussions, and there are currently more discussions going on, trying to come up with ways to maybe change that formula, but it just, nobody ever seems to come up with something else that everybody can agree on, because everybody could agree, hey, look, Bath, they should pay more money. But why should Bath pay more money? They're paying per capita, and then they won't agree to that. We want to pay less. What, is West Bath supposed to pay more? Is the Rastec supposed to pay more? Is Georgetown supposed to pay more? It's a tough thing to do. But I want to address some of the specific things that were raised, too. The inactive cardholder issue, that, you know, those numbers are run every year, so if you haven't used your card, and as you think you said, I don't want to be personal here, if anybody hasn't used their cards in, you know, a year or two, then they're not counted as an active cardholder anymore. And it is for those very reasons. You could, you know, we could easily, if we counted everybody and never discounted them off the list, we'd have many, many thousands of cardholders in the number, so we don't do that. I would also suggest, if you haven't looked at this handout, you take a look at this handout that's on the table over there, and look at all the services that the library provides. And just some of them that I always felt were particularly important is to, if you go over and just visit and see the children's room and the teen space, it's, there are just so many programs that are, that make the lives of the kids that we're trying to raise in our communities better. And, you know, teen space especially, that was developed in the last few years, and to keep the teens who don't want to get involved in dangerous or, you know, otherwise undesirable after-school activities, it's there, and they're, the teens who are there and choose to go there, they're so engaged and so creative with the many, many things they do, they do. It's just, it's great to see, and, but all age groups are represented. One of the things that, one of the programs that was added in the last two years, I think, was the homebound delivery service. So, if you know somebody here in town who is a reader and just really can't get out anymore, then you can work with the library to come up with books or records or other materials that they are interested in, and someone from the library will come over and deliver the books to those persons and then return them. So, that's a great thing, and then there's a million things you can do that don't even require visiting the library. You can watch movies from home. You can read newspapers. There's just so many things you can do. You can, you should, before making a decision that this is not something that we as a community need, I really think it's incumbent on us to familiarize ourselves with what the library actually offers, instead of making assumptions about what it is.
I'd like to just make a quick comment. This is the only item on this warrant tonight of this size that is not state-mended, mandated, that is only used by 25% of our population. 25% of the citizens of the town of Woolwich have a library card, but 100% of us pay for it. I think the library does a great job at what they do, but I have to agree with what the young lady up back said. It seems hard every year. I mean, this is, this is almost all we spend on our town budget, you know? And it gets harder and harder. I would speculate that 99.9% of all the people that have a library card can afford to buy their own, and we could always set aside a few bucks to have down at Town Hall to buy library cards for anybody that said that it was a burden. And, you know, we could do it on a QT, and we would keep a list of who asked or anything like that, and get treated almost like general assistance. So, it might be something to think about. If not tonight, maybe in the future.
Heidi, did you have another comment?
Yeah, just a couple, two comments. I'm sorry. Can you use the mic?
Yeah. Can you remember the night back?
Can you not hear me?
No.
No problem.
Boy, nobody's ever said that.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right. Um, I just want to reiterate that this is not against the library. This is not wanting to give anything to the library, but to reduce the amount that we have. I mean, even $10,000 as a donation to the library, I think, would be huge to reflect the actual number of people in our town that are using the library. Am I correct in hearing that all of the RSU-1 students actually can go to the library for free?
From Woolwich?
From Woolwich.
RSU-1 does have representation on the library board, but they're not, RSU-1 students are not automatically given library cards. Only the towns that are part of the library.
Okay. So, is there a minimum amount of money that you have to pay in order to be what you say part of the library, in order for our RSU-1 kids of Woolwich to be able to get a card?
Well, the charter of the library or the bylaws of the library are essentially a compact between the participating municipalities, and it's agreed that those municipalities will all pay the same per capita amount to support the operating budget of the library.
So, if we vote for this tonight again, like I think David said, 100% of us will be paying for what 25% of us actually utilize. Correct?
Well, 30% of the population of Woolwich has a library card, but having a library card doesn't mean that you don't benefit from the library's program. There are things that, most of the things that you do, like if you go to the library to a history talk or children's storytime or whatever, you don't need to show your library card. You just go and enjoy the benefits of the service.
So, if we didn't pay anything, or if we only paid $10,000 or $15,000, would we still be able to go to the library and enjoy those things?
Well, theoretically, I guess you could, but would you want to be sort of abusing the system in that way?
How would I be abusing the system if we're giving a donation from the town and I'm paying for a library card? Just questions to think about.
Okay. Thank you. Sarah. You've got the mic.
My name's Peter North. My name's Peter North. I live in Acadia Shores, and I'm concerned about this perspective that 25% of the people use it. Many of us don't have children in schools, and we support the town. We don't particularly use the school, but we agree to support them. And as citizens, good citizens, we try to live up to our duty that way. I view the library the same way.
Somebody mentioned that this is under general government rather than donations. We moved it under general government several years ago, because with donations, people ask for a certain amount, but we determined what we're going to give them. With the library, we were told if we didn't give the entire amount, that the town was out of the library. So, that's why we moved it under general government several years ago.
Yes, ma'am.
Senator, my name is Marilyn Sprey. I live on Old Stage Road. I agree with the gentleman that just spoke, that if we only funded things that huge amounts of people in the town used, we wouldn't have EMT, we wouldn't have fire, we wouldn't have these employees, because, and I feel the same way about a library, and I disagree tremendously with the fact that no, none of our students are going there. I have a daughter who won a writing contest, second place in a writing contest, a granddaughter, last year, from Woolwich, this school right here. My grandkids use it. My husband and I use it. After school, I see tons of kids in the library. Huge, you know, huge difference from when the school gets out to before. I see lots of them. So, that's my opinion.
Sarah. Over there.
My name's Mike Fear, Old Stage Road. I do use the library, but I'm not standing here to say it's about me. I'm here to say that we're going to vote, and there are none of the youngsters here to vote. We're voting on behalf of them. So, I will be voting yes for the money for the kids, as it's pointed out, it's a great new center there. Taking care of our kids is number one priority, and I think this library does a great job.
Raymond, this lady right over here.
I'm Wendy Centon, and I live on Middle Road. I lived here for almost 32 years. I do use the library, and there's so many services. I think before you come to the conclusion that only a certain number of people use it, did you know that you could go to the Botanical Gardens and take children for free if you have a library card? I bet a lot of you didn't know that. There are tons of things that go on in the library. I work in the toy store in Bath. I've been there for 11 years since it first started. I see kids coming in all the time. This afternoon, there was a number of kids from Woolwich that had just come from the library and come to visit in the toy store, and that happens almost every day. So, I agree with everybody. I just think, you know, we've been paying taxes here for almost 32 years and not had a child in the school system, and we're not complaining about that. We think it helps our home values in the, in the end, to have these services for everybody. So, I think it's important to fund the library as best we can.
Just a friendly reminder, when we're making comments, this is addressed to the moderator.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Oh, you're going to left. Yeah.
I'm Karen Anderson, and I live here on the Quasette Road, but I just wanted to point out that if we as a town pull out from the library and only people who wanted to use the library paid in, the library wouldn't be able to stand. It needs that money, you know? One town pulling out, it just wouldn't be a library anymore.
Do you have another comment, ma'am? Okay. And Tom.
Yeah, just for clarification, it may have been disinterpreted, that I don't think the issue is whether to contribute to the library or not, but I think there is a number of people that could afford to pay the library card, and on that basis, reevaluate how much the town itself contributes to the collective of the library the way it's presented now. So, the voice is really for having a conservative voice on the board of the library that is willing to look at the budget seriously and determine how it's handled, and/or have an option to provide cards for those that are interested at a value that's, say, $20,000 contributed to those that are interested in having a card for the library, and having those that can afford to pay their fair share, pay their fair share, so that the town is not getting to the collective of the library at this point.
Sarah. Matt Kilo again. So, the notion that there, I think someone said they think 99% of the policy, the cardholders in Bath, could pay the $70 a year, I think that's not realistic, right? A lot of people take a lot of advantage of the library because they can't afford to go off and buy books, and to put that money on them, I think it's just not going to happen. We don't ask people who can afford to pay more to... We don't ask people who can afford to pay more to pay more for the school system or to pay more for the EMT or to pay more for the firefighters. It's all part of the public good that we all collectively fund. Secondly, I just want to say, we're talking about a 5% increase in the budget, which, you know, we just talked about all the reasons why insurance is going up, coming out of a very inflationary environment where payroll is going to be up, repair costs are going to be made. A 5% increase is, I think, very reasonable in the times of right now.
Any other discussion? Sarah.
My name is Alan. Just so I'm abundantly clear, no vote on this removes Woolwich from the libraries.
Sarah.
My name is Scott Chian. I just have a question because we've talked about this a lot over the years. And I seem to recall in years past when people suggested that we don't fund the library, people why you use the cards, that wasn't even an option because if we're not a member of town, I seem to recall the discussion being that, you know, even though we throw that out, it's suggested it can't happen. So I guess that's a question that I wouldn't want to risk us not being a town and then people not being able to get library cards. It's a very valuable resource.
Any other discussion? Wait over here on the left.
Hi, my name is Rob Stevens, and I live on Marksley Road. And just so everybody knows, I'm married to one of those select members up there. I just, I mean, to me, the library, it's like, that's part of what makes America great. We have schools, we have a fire department, we have ambulance service, we have selectmen who sure aren't getting paid minimum wage to do their job. And the library is all part of what's allowed this country to become what it is. And I think probably the real question should be, you know, not that kids aren't... I'm sure that most of those would say, "My rotten kid isn't reading a book. You know, always he's looking at his phone." I think we'd be better off trying to figure out what do we need to do to get kids in the library rather than to defund it.
Yes, ma'am, right up here at the front.
Just as someone who does not have a library card, I wanted to alert you to things you may not know you can get out of the library even without a card. I have gone online and listened to a number of great lectures with the history group there, just sitting in my own home, but it was organized by the library.
Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to move the question.
Okay, the question has been moved and seconded. We need two thirds vote to move the question. And all those in favor of moving Article 18 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The question is moved. So Article 18 as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Article 18 passes. Article 19. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $53,912 for the office operations account, the approximate breakdown of the count is as follows.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Longley.
I want to make a motion to suspend the balance of the reading of that line ahead.
And a second. So motion and seconded to suspend the reading of Article 19. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion to suspend the reading is passed. Article 19 has been moved and seconded as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article passes. Article 20. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $44,000 for the municipal building operation of plant account. The approximate breakdown of the count is as follows.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Longley.
Would you make a motion to dispense the balance of the reading of that line ahead? Second.
Been a motion and seconded to suspend the reading of Article 20. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Make a motion that the aye will be accepted and read as presented. Second motion.
Article 20 has been moved and seconded as presented. Any discussion? Mr. Stoner.
Thank you. Just a simple question. I don't see anywhere in the warrants, and not in this warrant as well, that there's any accounting for the solar program and what benefits or not benefits it's had.
Discussion of the town on solar panels will be coming up under Article 28.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 20 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 20 passes. I am going to bundle Articles 21 through 28. And again, if you want to pull one of those articles out for a separate vote, you're more than welcome to do so. Article 21. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $12,667 for the town's insurance. Note, Article 21 includes all municipal buildings, its contents, and tax-acquired properties. Vehicle insurance is now listed on the appropriate, under the appropriate departments, for example, fire and EMS. 2023 appropriation, $11,500. Article 22. To see if the town will authorize the board of selectmen to sign a one-year contract with an assessing agent for the purpose of assessing and maintaining the equity of property assessments further, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $46,800 as payment to the assessing agent. 2023 was $45,600. Article 23. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,500 to update the property tax maps. Last year's appropriation, $2,500. Article 24. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,500 for the computer replacement account. 2023, $2,500. Article 25. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,895 for the payment of membership dues for the main municipal association. 2023 appropriation, $4,815. Article 26. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $11,800 to pay the auditor. 2023, $10,800. Article 27. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 for the town's litigation account. 2023 appropriation, $10,000. Article 28. To raise and appropriate $7,000 and put into a reserve account for the purchase of solar panels at the end of seven years from Revision Energy Green Vault LLC with a purchase price of $48,327. 2023 appropriation, $7,000.
Move the article to be accepted and read. Second motion.
Articles 21 through 28, it's been moved and seconded as read. Any discussion? Tom.
Yes, I'd like to...
Hang on one second. Go right over there. Yep, the mic's coming.
Yes, I'd like simply to ask if Article 28 be separated to a vote on its own?
Okay, we can do that.
The town, the town has been setting aside funds each year for the last seven years in honor of the purchase of solar panels, allowing the town to take full advantage of the power generator. This year, we, this is the last year we've set $7,000 aside because we have $49,000 now, and the purchase price is $48,327. That may be, that price may not be exact. It may run a little higher, a little lower, depending on... We've got to get a hold of Revision Energy, Green Vault, and finalize the negotiations on the purchase, but we have enough money to do it this year. And then after that, the town will be paying just the delivery portion of the bill because we can generate enough electricity out of the list to run everything the town runs, with the exception of streetlights because streetlights cannot be solar-powered through contractors, seemingly.
You still want to remove, you want to separate it?
Yeah, I could either ask for a request here or separate it as a separate entity. Probably a separate entity and have a discussion on that point.
Yeah, so Tom, you want the article to be moved for a separate discussion?
Yes, I do.
Okay, we can, we'll do that. No? All right. Any further comment on Article 21 through Article 27? Seeing none. All those in favor of Articles 21 through 27 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion, Article passes. Revisiting, not revisiting, but redoing Article 28. To raise and appropriate $7,000 and put into a reserve account for the purchase of solar panels at the end of seven years from Revision Energy Green Vault LLC with a purchase price of $48,327. Done.
Move the article to be accepted and read. Second.
Article 28 has been moved and seconded as read. Any discussion? Tom.
Yes, the question really that I have is, I've requested a couple of times over the last several years to have data and information regarding the remaining, the remaining amount is figured out here as close as possible. But to request the electric offset realized per year and what the above and below expectations will be to anticipate what it's going to cost the town once we do purchase the solar panels. So the annual cost, the maintenance per year while leased and then after ownership that the town takes over. Do we have numbers on that data? I've asked for it several times in the last several years, and no one has given that information to me yet. Thank you.
We do not at this time have all those numbers, no. We've got to sit down with Revision Energy and Green Vault LLC. The panels are seven years old. They have a life expectancy of 35 years. So they should, they should go for several years. And if one of them does fail, we can almost replace them one at a time. That's the best I can tell you about it, Tom. I'm not an expert on solar panels. If there's anybody in the road that is, jump in.
Well, I can tell you that 30, 35 years is not accurate, David. 20, usually 20, 25 years is typical for life expectancy, including other possibilities. But an annual operating information with the data we have and the computer age that we're in, that data should be available on an annual basis. If we're not looking at that, then we're not paying attention to the budget that we're going to have.
Mr. Longley.
I move the question.
There's a motion and seconded to move the question.
Discussion?
Discussion. No, no, we're going to do the move first, one bit. All those in favor of moving the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The question has been moved. Article 28. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 28 passes. Article 29. To see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to take up $85,000 from the undesignated fund balance for roofing and siding replacement and repairs for the fire department and municipal building as deemed necessary.
Move the article to be accepted and read. Second motion.
The article has been moved and seconded as read. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 29 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 29 passes. Health, welfare, and sanitation. I'm going to bundle Articles 30, 31, and 32. Article 30. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $13,500 for the continued sampling of groundwater from the installed surface water test sites at the landfill. 2023, $12,000. Article 31A. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $255,241.21 for complete weekly curbside refuse collection and disposal, biweekly curbside recycling collection and disposal, and to authorize the select people to enter into an agreement with Riverside Disposal and EcoMaine for their services. 2023 was $245,888.21. Breakout of costs is as follows. Weekly curbside collection trash, $100,000, excuse me, Biweekly curbside collection recycling, $34,467.5. Disposal tipping fee based on an estimated of 1,270 tons, Tipping fee for recyclables estimated at 227 tons, $12,712 for the total of $255,241.21.
The article to be accepted and read.
Keep going, I'm sorry. No, you're good. Article 31B. To see if the town will appropriate a sum not to exceed $25,000 from the undesignated fund balance account for the select board to use if necessary for unanticipated solid waste disposal and recycling costs. C. To see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $2,500 for the household hazardous waste collection event. Do note that each year, the city of Bath, along with area towns, sponsor a Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day. Citizens sign up to dispose of such items as oil-based paints, fuels, solvents, insecticides, et cetera. This year's date is May 4th, 2024. And Article 32. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,500 for the maintenance and upkeep of Nikwassit Park Outhouse. Note, the Nikwassit Park Committee budget request is now included in this article. Last year's appropriation, $4,000.
Now they've moved to accept all the articles to be read. Second motion.
Motion and seconded, Articles 30 through 32 as read. Any discussion? Seeing none. All, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. One second.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask, but as far as the water testing that goes on at the landfill, are there results from that? And how would we access information on that?
That is required by state law. As you probably know, if you're a longtime resident, the Woolwich dump was famous for taking anything that came in through the gate. And unfortunately, we do have a plume underground of hazardous waste that's kind of moving around. So we have to sample a certain number of wells every year. Unfortunately, fortunately, they've cut down on the number of wells we have to sample. Unfortunately, the cost to sample them keeps going up. So we have no choice but to do this, and, you know, it is state mandated.
But I'm interested in what the results are.
We have the results at the town hall, and you can stop down there and we can show them to you at any time you want to see them.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, in the back.
I fully support the cost for this. I just want to point out, we're talking about wanting a 10% increase on this, and no one's asking what percentage of our population use in the Quasid Outhouse. and no one's asking what percentage of our population uses Nakwasa Outhouse. I don't know if that's what we're doing. State order.
Again, this is state mandated cost.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Articles 30, 31 and 32 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion, uh, Articles pass. Article 33, highways and bridges, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate such sums of money as may be necessary for the following accounts. Mr. Longley?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to dispense with the reading of the balance of each individual line item. Second.
An emotion and seconded to suspend the reading of Article 33. Discussion? Oh, uh, uh, do you want, you want to hear it? Go ahead.
In part, no, I just wanted to question.
Okay, all, all right, you can't after, we're just going to suspend the reading. All those in favor of suspending the reading for Article 33 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
Okay, I move the Article 33 to be accepted as presented. Second motion?
Article 33 has been moved and seconded as presented. Any discussion?
I'd just like to know why culvert repair is zero. That seems very strange to me, given all the flooding that's gone on around recently.
Uh, so that land was put in some years ago from large culvert replacements. Every year in the road and bridge account, there are regularly culverts that are replaced. But some years ago, there was, I can't remember, four-foot, five-foot pipe. It was a large item and that item, that was put there and it continues to stay there, stay there, but there'll still be culvert changes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 33 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Article passes. Article 34, to see if the town will authorize the selectmen to remove up to $62,000, if available, from the local road assistance program, LRAP, account for hot topping in town roads.
The article will be accepted and read.
Second motion?
Article 34A has been moved and seconded as read. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 34A signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? 34A passes. 34A, uh, excuse me, Article 34B, to see if the town will authorize the selectmen to spend any additional LRAP funds for whatever highway purpose the selectmen and the road commissioner deem appropriate.
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Second motion?
Article 34B has been moved and seconded as, as read. Any discussion? Seeing, seeing none. All those in favor of 34B signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? 34B passes. Article 35, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $40,000 for repair and maintenance on unpaved town maintained roads. Last year's appropriation, $40,000.
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Second motion?
Article 35 has been moved and seconded as read. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 35 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Article passes. Protection. Article 36, to see if the town will raise and/or appropriate such sums of money as may be necessary for the following accounts. Appropriate $600 from the Woolwich Emergency Management Agency account and raise and appropriate $66,688 through taxation. So, just so you have a note, there's a note that the, uh, Woolwich EMA stands for Woolwich, like I said, but that stipend, that stipend says no new tax dollars, but a $600.
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Second motion?
I haven't read the rest of it yet.
Make a motion not to read it. Are you waiting for me in the honorable?
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to waive the reading, the rest of the reading of Article 36. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
Now I move the question.
Article 36 has been moved and seconded as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none. Article 36, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Article 36 passes. Article 37A, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $195,448 for the fire department account. Mr. Longley?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to dispense with the balance of the reading of each individual line item.
Second.
An emotion and seconded to waive the reading of Article 37A. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion passes.
I move the 37A as presented. I second the motion.
Article 37A has been moved and seconded as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none. Article 37A, all those, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion passes. Article 37B 1 and 2, I'm going to do together. Article 37B, to see if the town will vote, one, to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,280 for interest payments for the sixth year for the fire truck. And two, to raise and appropriate the sum of $34,800 for principal payments for the sixth year for the fire truck.
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Second motion?
Article 37B 1, 2 has been moved and seconded as read. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Article 37B passes. Article 38, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 for the catastrophic repair account.
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Second motion?
Article 38 has been moved and seconded as read. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, whoop, I'm sorry. We're, sorry, Jeff.
No, Paul, sir. Um, $10,000, don't we just vote on a contingency account? While back, so these aren't the same?
No.
Is this for the fire?
No, this is, uh, this is for the use of the EMS and the fire department in case they lose a transmission in one of the trucks or something.
Got you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 38 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Article 38 passes. Article 30, Article 39A, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $389,880 for the emergency medical service department. Mr. Longley?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to dispense with the reading of the balance of each individual line item.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to waive the reading of Article 39A. All those, all those, uh, in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion passes.
Move the, we accept the passcode defense.
I second the motion.
Article 39A has been moved and seconded as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none. Article 39A, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Just want to make a note that there is potential to bring in $120,000 in revenue, which will be used to offset the costs of the, of that service. Article 39B 1, 2, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,350 for interest payments for the fifth year for the ambulance. Two, to raise and appropriate the sum of $21,429 for principal payments for the fifth year for the ambulance.
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Second motion?
Article 39B has been moved and seconded as read. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of 39B signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? 39B 1, 2 passes. Article 39C, to see if the town will authorize the selectmen to use any amount of income generated by the rescue services to reduce the budget as they deem appropriate.
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Second motion?
Article 39C has been moved and seconded as read. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? 39C passes. Article 40, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $400 from the snowmobile registrations reimbursement from the Nakwasa Trail Breaker Snowmobile Club. 2023 appropriation, $400.
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Second motion?
Article has been moved and seconded as read. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Article 40 passes. Article 41, to see what sum of money the town will vote to donate to the following local agencies. Mr. Longley? Mr. Longley?
I'd like to make a motion to dispense with the balance of the reading of each of those line items.
Second?
It's been a motion and seconded to suspend the reading of Article 41's line items. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion passes.
Make a motion that the article be accepted and read.
Second motion?
Article 41 has been moved and seconded as presented. Any discussion? Heidi, you go first.
Um, my question is about the Tedford Housing Special Fund request. Um, that's $7,500 off the bat. I'm wondering how many people from Woolwich have been able to take advantage of that, the housing? Um, and is there a number of, forgive me, I know nothing about this, but I want to ask. Are there a number of beds that are, like, associated with each town that uses the shelter? Because it's in Cumberland County, correct? It's in Brunswick? Um, you're the man from there, right? I'm just wondering, when was the last time somebody from Woolwich used the, used the Tedford Housing?
Okay, um, I'm going to recognize Mr. Lardy. He's the executive director of the Tedford. If there's no objection, I'm going to ask him to go ahead and answer that question.
Good evening and thank you for the question. Um, hi, my name is Andrew Lardy. I am Brunswick resident and I work at Tedford Housing. We are based in Brunswick. Um, Tedford Housing, it used to be known as Ted, it used to be called Tedford Shelter. We've been around since 1987. So Tedford is the sort of region's only provider of homelessness prevention services and emergency shelter. So that looks like a few different things. It means giving people money to stay in their houses if they're about to lose their home. It might be heating assistance, it might be rental assistance, it might be security deposit, um, it might be current home repair, it might be, uh, utility assistance. Um, also, we have the emergency shelters for folks who have lost their housing and are looking for a roof over their head. This past year, I need to check my data. So we, we, our shelters are small. We have six apartments for families, we have 16 beds for adults. Mostly what we do is we say no. We turn people away because we're too small, so we're trying to grow. Uh, we have a facility that, um, we are trying to fund to add 60% more capacity to our, to our shelter capacity. Um, not that that's going to absorb all the unmet need out there in the community, but we think it's an amount that is politically feasible, that people can tolerate and that is fiscally feasible, that we can raise the money. Um, so last year we turned away two adults, uh, Woolwich residents who called us looking for a place to stay, we couldn't help them. And we turned away five families from Woolwich who were looking for a place to stay. We have had family shelter in the past couple of years, according to our stats. We have not had an adult shelter guest in the last few years. We've had a family shelter guest in the last few years. We've also helped some Woolwich families through the Warm by Neighbor Heating Assistance Program. And, you know, in any one year, for any one town, the actual literal dollars and cents impact might not be that big, right? Um, but the idea is this is part of our critical safety net. It has value like an insurance policy for every town, every year. And we want to be, we want to do a better job of it. We want to say yes more often. And that starts with being able to replace our dumps of shelters, uh, with a new facility. So, um, appreciate your consideration, happy to answer other questions.
Any other discussion? Over here, whoop, start with the lit, yep, good job. You're doing a great job, by the way.
Marilyn's friend from Full Stage Road. I'm just questioning, what is the main maritime boat program? For $5,000 and what is Spectrum Generations?
Uh, the main maritime boat program is put on, uh, the, um, the eighth grade students here in the school get to write an essay of why they'd like to go down there and build a boat. They get to go down there and actually build a boat that is auctioned off. And it's great, if you ever get a chance, they'll, they'll welcome you in to watch. It's great to see kids in there that are not allowed to use their cell phone or calculator. They're actually in there using a tape measure and fractions and pencil and to do the math and they build the boat. And it, uh, it's a really rewarding program and I think it's well worth the $5,000.
Chair? Oh, Spectrum Generations as well is another part, sorry.
So, um, so Spectrum Generations, thanks for the question, is, um, for aging, um, elderly, aging services, so. I think their office, their office is in Brunswick. But they're sort of our catchment, um, area agent, area agency on seniors.
Mr. Doffey?
Yep, Charlie Doffey, living Delano Road. I just wanted to speak for a moment to the, um, question about the Maritime Museum Boat Program. I volunteered in that program for eight years, I'm not doing it this year. But I can, uh, speak, um, really clearly, that is a fabulous program. Uh, what happens is, um, a group of up to 15 middle school kids from Woolwich come. That's seventh and eighth graders. They spend every Wednesday of their school year, their school day, every Wednesday coming to school, the bus brings them in. They get, get into the boat shop. They, uh, participate in the program through the day. Then the boats, the, the bus picks them up at the end of the boat. Um, at the end of the program, the boat would pick them up because they just built it. Um, but no, seriously, they, um, they, they go back to school. They are on their own for catching up with homework and so on. This goes on the entire year. They have a terrific program of woodworking skills. And then they do build two SKFs, one of which is donated to the school to be auctioned off to support the school programs. And one stage at the museum, which they auction off for the, for that, that program. I can tell you, these kids learn a lot. They have a blast, they love it. They come in, as for many of them, it's their favorite day of the, of the week. And, um, they, yes, they are, as a, anybody who's worked with middle school age kids knows that they do not sit still. They like being with their friends and they are very energetic. And this is a great way for them to do both of those things. Thank you.
Thank you. In the back, living in the back.
Kimberly Becker, um, I just wanted to ask how we get to the number for the donation to the food bank that we, um, that we establish on here, the $1,250? Is there a calculation for that? I think it's a lot lower per capita than the other surrounding communities. So I'm just curious how, how that's chosen.
Thanks, um, the town administrator can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's what they asked for.
No?
Normally they ask for $1,500.
$1,500.
And we just have gone every year from what we've appropriated to the maximum. All right, thank you.
They normally ask for $1,500 every year and for the past three, four years, we've just allocated. years, we've just allocated the twelve-fifty for them.
Can this number be changed, or is it too late?
I don't believe you can increase.
I don't think you can increase it, right? You can only.
Note that the numbers on this, on this warrant can be increased here. You can decrease them, but you cannot increase them at all.
Okay.
What we did, what we decided several years ago, was we, we were getting, when I first got elected, we had, we had a donation list of maybe four or five people asking for donations. And it started to grow. So what we do now is if anybody wants to add anything here, they have to go out and get a signature. So I think it's fifty, fifty residents to get on the list. But we, we decided ten, twelve years ago to freeze the numbers. Whatever they ask for the first year is what they get forever. And that's, it's just the only way that we could figure a way to be able to control the amount of money that we are using your house to generate to give away.
Gentlemen, we're on the far, and then I'll come up to Mike.
Rob Stevens again. Charlie Doffey actually answered my question. I wondered how many kids were sending to the Maine Maritime Museum. And so I'm just curious, we're spending five thousand dollars to teach kids wooden boat building? Is that really a good use of our money? And I'm just getting prepared for next year's, how much money do we spend to send kids to the library? Maybe we should send the kids to the boat building program, or vice versa?
Rob, these kids may not ever build a wooden boat after this, but they'll know how to hang a door or clear their fence out front of their house. And give them enough carpentry skills, they could probably get a lifelong benefit of this.
Mr. Fear, then I'll come to the back.
Mike Fear, Old Stage Road. I just want to speak to both the Tedford Shelter and the Food Bank. I don't need either one of them, but I'm so happy that we have them. I was in Portland over the weekend, and you saw people who were homeless, and you saw people who obviously had a lot of time getting a meal. So I think, I think we should have no problems supporting that, and I just want to say, and thank you for the Tedford Shelter, what you do, because, you know, it's not a, I, I enjoy kelp-sown cookware, and I'm going to stick with that. I appreciate you having me, I thank you.
Thank you. We'll let this lady go, and then I'll come back to you, Jeff.
Hi, I'm Linda Wood from the River Road, and I circulated the petition for fifty signatures for the Tedford Shelter request. And I want to clarify that there's a new building underway. It's going to be built out by the Walmart parking lot. It will increase the capacity of the Tedford Shelter enormously. This is a one-time request. This is not like the Food Bank twelve-fifty every year. You won't see the seventy-five-hundred-dollar request again. And it really is an incentive for all the area towns to match our generosity in supporting homeless families and children, some of whom occasionally do come from Woolwich, and others who deserve our help too.
We're going to go to the back, please, Jeff.
Good afternoon, good evening. So I've been here all night, and I've listened to how we are spending money like it's water. And we're sitting here fighting over five thousand dollars, fifteen hundred, but we've just spent almost one-point-seven million dollars. I think this is pretty sad, especially when there's, what, three thousand people in this town? Our turnout is kind of low, I think. And then we're voting on everybody in this town. So the Food Bank, absolutely. I think that they do more good than they don't. We should be giving them more money. We should be giving money to the Tedford Shelter because we need to be a community and help other people. Spending sixty-six thousand dollars for something that we want to help the kids, right? Well, that's what boat building does. It gives them skills, which puts them in the workforce later on. It builds TV building, and jeez, it might just help us out later on in life.
It's been a motion to move the question over here to my left. Do I have a second? It's been a second. All those in favor of moving the question, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The question is moved. Article forty-one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article passes. Article forty-two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety-one dollars for donations to the local agencies and organizations. This is the total of the article from above. Article forty-two has been moved and accepted as, as seconded as read. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article forty-two passes. Ordinances. Article forty-three, shall section two of the Town Woolwich Solar Energy Systems Ordinance be amended as follows. Two-point-one, Solar Energy System, SES, a solar photovoltaic cell module or array, or solar hot air or water collector device, including all solar-related equipment, which relies upon solar radiation as an energy source for collection, inversion, storage, and distribution of solar energy for electricity generation or transfer of stored heat. For the purposes of this ordinance, systems or solar-powered devices or appliance generating less than or equal to one thousand watts are not considered a solar energy system. The article has been moved and seconded as read. I know that I believe Suckman Davis is going to have a couple of comments.
Yeah, this is, this is a follow-up to something that was raised during the public hearing for the solar ordinance last year, that there was a concern that the, you know, front stoop lighting that you buy at Home Depot that's run by solar power would be considered part of the solar ordinance. And this is just a clarification, make it clear that it does not. So when you buy just small little solar devices, that it's not part of the ordinance. That's really all this does.
Any other discussion? Mr. Stoner.
Yes, it was indicated last year by the Select Board at this town meeting that this ordinance did not apply to residential applications. However, as probably everyone realizes, the residential applications were listed as part of the building, as required building permits according to that proposed ordinance. The proposed amendment this year only adds limits for residential applications to anything over one kilowatt. However, it should be realized that off-the-shelf solar generators are available for up to five K W. So what that, I'm not sure what prompted the one-kilowatt level, other than to place a number on restricting freedom to choose independent energy sources. Really, this is just a continuing effort to gradually restrict freedoms further. And I'm sure all of you have heard of the boiling frog theory. I think we're involved in that. In view of the discussion that didn't happen when the public hearings took place, only one person showed up at that, name of me. The proposal recommends further discussion among the larger audience to maintain more freedom of choice, suggesting that up to five kilowatt should be permitted for residential use without the registration fee. Ideally, the Select Board should be held to their statement of this ordinance not applying to residential applications that they made last year in selling this ordinance. Since no amendments are possible at this town meeting, a request to have further consideration and discussions of a higher limit on residential solar generation requires a no vote on this article. Thank you.
Before we even had a solar energy regulation thing, you, you were required to get a building permit to put them on your roofs before we even had an article, a solar energy article. So nothing has changed other than that, Tom. I mean, you, even before this ordinance existed, you had to get a building permit to put them on your roof.
That's a tough question, David.
So Tom, what I recall last year is, we, we had discussed this when we were passing this ordinance, or voting on this ordinance. And what I recall, you're correct in what the Select Board said, and I think I read a statement, which is in the record from the attorney, that this did not apply to that. If I recall, it was, maybe you, but Tom Mcfee was here last year, was concerned about clarification. So we said, fine, we'll go back and look into it. If this doesn't pass tonight, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're still fine, right? I mean, isn't that the interpretation of the town attorney? It's not, it's not a totally necessary amendment to the ordinance. It's just that we were coming back, and Tom and his group worked on, and I know you attended, some allowance here to make it more clear, but I don't think the majority of the board is convinced that we necessarily needed another, right?
So what you're saying then is if there is a yes vote on this, or a no vote, doesn't really matter, either way, if there's a no vote, it's an opportunity to have a discussion of what the proper kilowatt capacity should be. Otherwise, if it is accepted, well, if it's not accepted, then that makes anything like your pathway lights, like any solar thing that's on your property, is going to require a permit according to this, according to this ordinance that exists right now.
We revised by the time of turning when the ordinance was originally drafted, that those types of applications weren't covered by the ordinance already. But Mr. Mcfee at the public hearing last year didn't feel confident that that would, that was in fact the case, and so we agreed to just add language to make it clear that small little sort of rink and dinks of the solar devices were not part of the ordinance.
Yeah, so solar devices, but like I'm saying, off-the-shelf solar generators are available now up to five thousand watts. That's something that's off-the-shelf, and a person could buy that without reference to any ordinance requirement. I, I am surprised if that's not the case.
So Tom, real quickly, yeah, I mean, I think you can do that. I mean, you've got to remember what happened last year. There was a petition submitted to the Select Board in regards to allowing commercial solar farms, if you will, in rural zones. That was what all that was about. That was what the development of the ordinance was about. I don't think it's any intention, and I, and we already have that legal opinion, and it's on the record, that, you know, if you want to go to the store and buy some three-thousand-kilowatt solar gadget, I, I don't know, I think this pertains to that. I mean, do you? That's not, that's not what this is about.
Oh, you're saying it doesn't pertain to it, but then you say you have to get a permit? So which is it?
No, a permit's when you go and you get a solar ray, you want to put it on your roof. You want to put some big solar ray on your residential roof and attach it to your building. A building permit.
I have no problem with that. That is covered under the commercial side of this. It does not need to apply to the residential side. Just a resident going out purchasing something that's off-the-shelf. This ordinance, as it reads now, requires a permit from the town. So if it's, if it's a commercially, if it's a commercially applied, or, you know, something on someone's roof, or a large array, I can understand that. It's commercially applied. But if a person, a resident, can go out and buy something that's available off-the-shelf, this really should not apply.
I guess what I'm saying, Tom, is if you have to build a structure, hold this up, you've got to get a building permit. But if it's something you can buy that you can put in the back of your Subaru wagon and attach it to the roof of your car or whatever, you don't need a permit.
That's what I'm saying. That's exactly what I'm saying. And the way the ordinance reads now, anything, well, even with the amendment, anything over one kilowatt would be a requirement to have a permit.
Any other discussion? Bill, Mr. Longley. I missed that, Bill, can you? All right, the question's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The question has been moved. All those in favor of Article forty-three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Article passes. Article forty-four, shall the Town Woolwich Planning Ordinance be amended to address the mandatory aspects of LD two thousand and three, an act to implement the recommendations of the Commission to Increase Housing Opportunities in Maine by Studying Zoning and Land Use Restrictions? The article has been moved and seconded as read. I'm going to recognize our Planning Board Chairman, Mr. Greg Pitzkowski, for a moment.
I'm going to stand over here so I can put my, my things down on the table in case I can refer. Okay, so in two thousand and twenty-two, state legislature enacted LD two-zero-zero-three, the act that the moderator just read by my name, I won't repeat that. And we are required to implement that by the first of July this year. The general implementation by the state was first of July of last year, but for municipalities of our size, whatever, it was delayed a year. Attempts to further delay it or exempt small municipalities failed in the legislation, so, so we are here to, we're going to see how we have to implement it. The provisions of this legislation, LD two thousand and three, override any local ordinance that do not match or meet the standards of LD two thousand and three. So fundamentally, what this does, and I hope, hopefully people have picked up the one-page summary sheet and the ordinance that are on the side table. The one-page summary goes over the major points of it. The marked-up planning ordinance has highlighted changes in it. I'll make note if you are referring to the ordinance, there are some other strikeouts in the ordinance. If they're not highlighted, ignore them. They are from past revisions to the ordinance that are still part of the base document for record, but they're not applicable to the discussion tonight. So fundamentally, this relaxes the net residential density requirements for affordable housing. It generally commits additional dwelling units on existing lots in excess of the specific net residential density in the ordinances, and provides the erection of accessory dwelling units, which are, though not defined by the state that's been deferred to rulemaking, as have several other provisions and definitions for, in the ordinance, were deferred to the rulemaking process. We don't have the results of that now, but we're still required to implement by the first of July. So, so that being said, we, as the Planning Board, fully anticipate having to follow this, and we anticipate having a minimum of review, and decent potential of having to revise this ordinance after rulemaking is completed to come into line with whatever comes out of rulemaking. So unless there are any specific questions, I wouldn't read the rest of that summary sheet. Walking up to this, we did have three public access workshops and the mandatory public hearing, and then we reviewed the results from the public hearing. We do, there were some edits minor, actually, it had to do with the definition of mobile homes, which I won't go into now. I was really interested in the history of that, but it, it was, it was relevant to how we define and get the definition of the accessory dwelling units. So we did look at the, the ordinances of towns around us, specifically around SIC, and there are some differences and similarities, and so we took them into account. For example, we have a designated growth area, they do not. They were very onerous on their water and wastewater disposal requirements. We backed off from that. And, but anyway, so in before, right, turn it back over and for questions and whatever, I would like to thank the members of the Planning Board, our CEO, Chris Wolkerson, for a lot of effort. They had a lot of people who participated in the, the workshops and the public hearing, including members of the Select Board.
Okay. Mr. Longley.
I have a couple of quick questions. I think I'm loud enough, everybody can DM me. My name is Bill Longley. I live in Woolwich off the River Road. I've served as a code officer.
I've served as a code officer since July of nineteen ninety-one. I was here in Woolwich for fifteen years. I've been working in the Yamouth-Cumblin area for the last twenty-plus years. I don't know of any town that has adopted rules and regulations for ADUs that are done through the planning board. Now, that doesn't mean there isn't a town somewhere that's done that. But most of the towns, and all the ones I've checked on, like the city of Bath, the town of Cumberland, the town of Yamouth, all of those ADUs are done through the town code enforcement officer. There is no planning board review. And I have a couple questions. One is, what is the planning board fee for reviewing and approving an ADU as this ordinance passes tonight?
We did not establish a fee, and we would assume it would be a simple approval, similar to a home occupation, where we don't charge a fee to review for a home occupation.
You know the cost of a hydrologist to do a water study for an additional dwelling unit added to a site?
The cost of a hydrologist? No, I have a general idea for a whole subdivision. However, the requirement to have a hydrologist review the board or zoning at the discretion of the code enforcement officer, if they have questions or issues and want more additional data before they give the approval, in accordance with the statute. It's somewhat similar to what we have in our subdivision ordinance and our site plan ordinance, where the planning board can request extra studies, subject matter expert input, et cetera, if there are questions or concerns to support the application. So the expectation is that the code enforcement officers will be judicious in the application of that, and only require the hydrologist to come and weigh in, if in fact there are enough questions that he did not feel comfortable approving it on his own.
Does a single-family house that someone builds on their vacant lot require a hydrologist?
No.
Does a single-family house built on an individual lot go to the planning board?
No.
Then why do you have a more restriction on an ADU, an accessory, a small dwelling unit adjacent to or attached to the existing single-family house? Why is it so onerous? I understand I can't amend this tonight, so I'm gonna vote to turn it down.
So it's a good point, a good question, Bill. So, we discussed both these issues during the workshops, and not so much the public hearing, because they were discussed at the workshops, and it didn't come up as objections at the public hearing. The planning board versus CEO, and Chris was involved in this, Chris Wolkerson, our current code enforcement officer. The decision was to, for the time being, keep it at planning board, and again, which is basically a pro forma review to make sure the dimensional requirements and other provisions of the ordinance are met. Again, there'd be no review fee. And because this is new, and because things are still coming out potentially in rulemaking, we elected to keep it at the planning board. And the one benefit to that is, in, as a planning board, you know, the idea is on agenda, the public knows what's happening, or has the opportunity to attend the planning boards, who's happening in progress as opposed to after the fact. I anticipate, depending how things, you know, pan out over the, get defined through rulemaking, we may make a guess that this might go, and a further amendment might go make this a CEO issue. But for now, we kept it at the planning board. And I'll point out, as we discussed before, the guidance put out by the state does say that the planning board can conduct site plan review of the development, and developments defined in thirty MSRA, which would include an ADU. And we elected that that was overkill. And had we elected that, of course, we would have had men in our site plan ordinance to bring in residential, because residential's not covered by our current site plan ordinance. And so we thought site plan was overkill, but we kept it at the planning board level for now. But again, we don't anticipate much more than a pro forma review that the basic dimensional requirements and the documentation of the water, wastewater issues are presented, so.
Any other discussion or questions?
Yes, I had been on the planning board for a bit, and to give a little of my background, I was on a planning board in Pennsylvania. Yes, I'm from away. Trying to give some insight as to what is coming to the town of Woolwich. I know a lot of people have been, have moved here and enjoys having grown up here with the residential limitations that exist and the open space that exists. However, this ordinance is the precursor because of the mandate from the state to apply this ordinance, the way they're doing it. I know the planning board has put a lot of time in, and there has been a lot of input to it, but not enough from the general population that really should be encouraged to show up at the next workshop and ordinance reviewed by the planning board. What you need to understand is, article, if you read carefully, article three, section eight here, it says, "Affordable housing developments are permitted only in the designated growth area or in an area served by both adequate public, special district, or comparable sewer services." So those that live along Mill Road and those that live anywhere near the designated growth area, that permits any increase by density of housing by two and a half times according to the mandate from the state. And so the town of Woolwich will not remain rural as a result of this ordinance or the state mandate that's been handed down. So be prepared and understand that, and invest accordingly, probably some people already have.
Can Mr. Longley make a quick response?
Yes.
What Tom said is, I'm not gonna weigh in on the comments, but just the facts are true. But as he mentioned, the flow-down of these requirements is mandated, and does trump our local ordinance, in fact, that there's a conflict. So to certainly say, you know, eternal vigilance is the price of liberty. So we need to be, you know, as a town, say, on top of what's going on, and do as much as we can to mitigate impact for areas that we want to preserve and bring in the things that we want to bring in. But there's just, there's little choice in implementing the mandatory provisions here. And even if we didn't, I think still apply, and we'd be in conflict with that and open the town up for liability, potentially.
Yes, go ahead, Alison.
Greg, thank you for that. My, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're talking about in the designated growth area, which I understand, and/or in an area served by both adequate public, special district, or centrally managed water system, public and comparable sewer services. Do I understand that to mean that you need municipal water, municipal sewer for that?
I would, I would say in practice, that's what that means. Now, there's certain aspects, including potable water. Ironically, the definition of potable water as an apparatus ordinance has been deferred to rulemaking, so we'll maybe find out.
Mr. Longley.
The requirement of having water and sewers to hit the four times that I say, not two and a half.
There's been a motion, been a motion and second to move the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The question is moved. Article forty-four. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Article forty-five. Shall the ordinance entitled Woolwich Shellfish Ordinance be amended to replace the current shellfish ordinance enacted May eleventh, two thousand, amended at special town meetings on May ninth, two thousand and two, May sixth, two thousand and four, May ninth, two thousand, twenty twelve, and amended at town meeting April twenty-ninth, twenty seventeen, and August twenty-second, twenty twenty, be repealed and shall amendment be shellfish conservation ordinance for the town of Woolwich be enacted?
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Article has been moved and seconded and as read. I'm gonna first recognize Tom Clerk, Opal Keith.
There really isn't anything major when it comes to shellfish ordinance. What I did was I worked with Maine Department of Marine Resources, because our ordinance was so outdated. I wanted to add more aquatic species to our ordinance, just because, as everyone knows, the world is evolving, so is our ocean. So that's literally all it really has to do with. I don't know if anybody has any questions for me, though.
Any discussion or questions for Tom Clerk? All right, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of article forty-five signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article forty-five passes. Article forty-six. Shall the town vote to enact an ordinance entitled Property Tax Assistance Ordinance, which would provide property tax assistance to qualifying persons who reside in the town Woolwich? Under this program, the town Woolwich would provide supplemental cash refund payments to those individuals aged sixty-eight and older who qualify as Woolwich resident beneficiaries of the State of Maine Residence Property Tax Fairness Credit pursuant to chapter eight twenty-two of title thirty-six of the Maine Revised Statutes, as may be amended from time to time, and meet the criteria of this ordinance.
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Article forty-six has been moved and seconded and as read. I'm gonna first recognize Town Administrator Ken Dalton.
So I'm excited about this ordinance. Ever since the LD two ninety senior property tax stabilization program was abolished by the state last year, that everybody was so excited to have for their property taxes. So a lot of other municipalities already have this program in effect, and I've come from other municipalities that have done this, probably ten, fifteen years ago. So what this is, is the Maine Property Tax Fairness Credit, you apply through, excuse me, through the state. If you qualify, you can get up to a fifteen-hundred-dollar rebate. You come to the town and you submit an application, and with the qualifications being sixty-eight years of age, a consecutive tenure resident of Woolwich, claim Woolwich as your residency, then you can get a credit up to five hundred dollars, depending on how many people apply for the program, or how much of a refund you get back from the state. So.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of article forty-six signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article forty-six passes. Article forty-seven. To see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to take up to ten thousand dollars from the undesigned fund balance for the property tax relief ordinance.
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Article forty-seven has been moved and seconded and as read. Any discussion? Seeing none. Article forty-seven. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article forty-seven passes. Now, ladies and gentlemen, it's your town meeting. I'm gonna make a motion to, whoop, Gibson. Hang on.
First of all, before I make the motion to adjourn, I'd like to say that I think Mike did a great job, and he had some big shoes to fill after John Jappin had done it for over thirty years. But I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I want to echo what David said, but also you got high praise from one of your, from your runners before they left, because it was their bedtime. Bella said you were doing a very good job.
I told my girl that based on the length of time and the age that John Jappin stopped doing it, he's got thirty-one more years to go. On that note, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second motion. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.